We will begin, we will be, we will begin our meeting in about three minutes. All right. Good evening.
Recording in progress.
We'd like to welcome you to our regular school board meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 23rd. Uh, let's see, board members present in the boardroom. We have members, uh, Donley Higgins, Holloman, Jacobs, Lessons, uh, member Wilson and Bellamy. Member Wilson will join us online. Although the weather in Juneau is horrible, she may have connectivity and she may not, but we'll keep you posted. Also, uh, we have our, uh, our student, um, is not present tonight, but he is excused. We have Dr. Bryant, our superintendent, and then we have our executive assistant, uh, America Sullivan and still transitioning her into the role. We also have Ms. Katie Grant. So with that, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask everyone to stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next we have our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community. So again, I welcome you to our meeting. Thank you for attending, and thank you most importantly for supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. Uh, we thank our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district. And that investment is of your time, your talent, and of course your tax dollars. So thank you for being here. That brings us to item A3, approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Moved and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any opposition to approve? Uh, we have member, uh, Wilson is not in the room? Okay, she's about to be. Doesn't matter. Yeah. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda? Seeing and hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. Uh, our only report, we have a nexus item B, our student report. Since Mr. Pack is not here, member Lessons will read his report for us. Thank you.
Great. So this is a message that, um, Mr. Pack emailed to all of us, and I believe that the message and then the accompanying resolutions have been posted to this agenda. Good evening, Anchorage School District, school board members, administrators, and everyone attending the school board meeting today. I am currently in Indianapolis, preparing to board my plane back home after a busy four-day meeting for the inaugural National Federation of High Schools, NFHS, National Student Advisory Council, NSAC. Our group of 16, representing the 12 million student athletes and performing artists under the national organization, have discussed the most pertinent issues and opportunities facing high school students nationally, including topics like substance abuse, mental health, and cultural development, among others. We worked with the Student Services Committee and the CEO of the NFHS to discuss strategic plans and actions for the NFHS to address said issues. Additionally, the National Student Advisory Council planned for the annual Student Leadership Summit, hoping to incorporate more student voices into this highly anticipated event. I'm proud to represent ASD at this national level, and I am confident to say I embody the leadership and values emphasized by our district over the strip. In regards to our Anchorage School District Student Advisory Board meetings that occurred on the 16th, we accomplished many of the items we had set out to do. Most notably, we discussed and passed all of the four resolutions that we had on the table. And I will stop and say that I attended the meeting and they did a remarkable job, um, going through the process of approving these, um, resolutions. Back to Mr. Pack. The first on our agenda was resolution, was resolution 2023-04, titled "The Establishment Rights and Voting Privileges of Student School Board Members", which I, Joshua Pack, presented. It was passed with noted opposition. The second resolution presented by Josiah Shabaka from Frontier Charter School, labeled "Allows College Classes to Be Weighted on a 5.0 Scale in High School", passed with noted opposition. The third resolution, also presented by Josiah Shabaka, titled "The Region Spirit Award" was passed unanimously. The fourth resolution authored by Eagle River Students, um, J.C. Spencer, Jackson De La Cruz, Maddie Areola, um, Olivia Charles, and presented by Shane Zaleski, titled "ASD Transfer Students' GPA Class Rank Policy Resolution", passed unanimously. Um, and again, so PDFs of the resolutions have been posted to this agenda. And if I can just take the liberty, since I was at the meeting, um, again, I had a chance to sort of update students on our budget scenario and made a pitch for students to apply to come to Juneau with President Bellamy and me, um, in a few weeks. And I do know that we have four students who will be attending, and I'm really pleased that the administration is going to spend a little bit of time, um, helping onboard them before they go to Juneau. I think that's going to help make our collective time on task more efficient. So really grateful for the students or their SAB leaders and for Josh's report.
Thank you, member Lessons. And we wish Josh safe travels. Um, I think he will be in Juneau though, because he is a, uh, State Board of Education rep. Do we know if he's going to do that?
Katie's shaking her head behind you.
Oh, he was. Oh, no, he won't be representing ASD, but I think he'll be there with the State Board of Education. Yeah, so we'll see. Anyway, he's a busy guy. And what grade is he in? 11th grade. Yeah, all right. Thank you. So this brings us to our monitoring conversation. At our last meeting, the board was given a copy of the monitoring technical report for, let me find my, so many papers. Thank you. For our math proficiency. Thank you. Um, so we're now going to have our monitoring conversation based on the report that was given to us. Welcome, guys, uh, at the, at our first meeting. Before we, we, we begin our conversation, I just want to confirm that all four components are present in our report. Uh, the report clearly shows what is being monitored. Tonight, it's our math proficiency, uh, goal and interim goal. Both reports show data for three, uh, previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting period. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of, uh, performance. And finally, the report shows, uh, the supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables that are provided, uh, near the end of the report with next steps. So with all components present, we are ready to begin our, uh, conversation. Uh, for the purposes of understanding the current, uh, for the purposes of, uh, understanding the current reality of our students as compared uh, to this goal, uh, let's begin by asking questions that fall into the who, what, and why categories. Once those are fully understood, we will move to the how. Now, we know we sometimes get ahead of ourselves, and that's okay. So if you want to ask a how question before we get there, that will be okay too. Uh, so we asked board members to submit questions in advance, uh, although, um, some board members will do that. Other board members are stimulated here at the meeting during the, the conversation, uh, and so they can ask their questions at that time. So we have our amazing team here. Uh, so with this conversation logic in mind, the floor is now open for the board to engage in, uh, inquiry regarding our math proficiency goal. All right. So who has the first question for the superintendent? Member Lessons?
Yeah, I wanted to begin, and this was a question I shared ahead of time. I'll call it a softball question. Can you help everybody understand, um, why fewer students appear to meet the benchmark as we go throughout the year?
Thank you for the question. Um, I'm Chris Opitz, Senior Director of Assessment. There's, there's a lot of variables in that, um, some of which can be explained, and, um, I'll pass it off to some of my colleagues in just a minute. Um, but I really appreciated your questions, Ms. Lessons, um, member Lessons. We actually spoke with, uh, the researcher, one of the lead researcher, researchers at NWEA, um, the producer of MAPGrowth. And, um, it was a really insightful conversation. Uh, one, one thing that he noted, um, in particular was post-COVID nationwide. Um, our students are experiencing lower, uh, growth than pre-COVID, um, as well, which then in turn, translates to some lower achievement levels. And in particular, one thing, um, that he emphasized was the fact that this assessment is actually using pre-COVID norms, and those won't be set until 2026. So that, that definitely is a factor. Um, when you're looking at growth rates as of today, knowing nationwide, our students are growing at a lesser rate, and then you apply a pre-COVID benchmark sort of standard in the norm, um, you would expect in a typical large population such, you know, the United States or a huge school district, that that could attribute, uh, to some of that. There, there may be other variables as well, and I don't know if, um, anybody else would like to comment on that.
Okay.
Okay. Follow up?
Yeah, that's a really helpful. I mean, we know that COVID learning loss has taken place, but I think it's a really great thought to keep at the forefront of our minds that, um, the rate of catch-up is going to be slowed by slower rates of growth. Which sounds really complicated to address and probably requires more funding from Juneau.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up on that, one of the other things that he shared was, um, in our middle grades, uh, nationwide, sixth, seventh, and eighth, that, that's actually been, um, more impactful in terms of, uh, um, hindering growth. And then also when we look at the factors, uh, with our disparate groups, you know, some of our subgroups, um, like EDS, economically disadvantaged, those factors actually sort of, um, uh, also add another layer that reduces that growth because of all of the various complications that come with those factors. And so it was really insightful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I add something?
Yeah, sure.
I think also in our discussion, we wanted to point out that even though we're not meeting the national, uh, um, trends or showing on NWA, but that our average RIT score is increasing. And so we wanted to point out that, uh, doesn't mean that our student scores are decreasing because our average RIT scores are increasing. And I think, um, Chris, if you can explain how that, the difference between the two better than I can.
Well, in a nutshell, our kids are all, are growing, um, but they're not growing at a pace to stay, um, um, at that same percentile. So when, when, although it looks like it's going down, it does not mean the students are not growing. It just means that it's not necessarily keeping pace with that norm.
Um, given what you've just shared about middle grades and, um, the post-COVID environment that we're in, I think I typed out a really long question, but the core of it was, do our students do better there, the longer they're with ASD? And I was trying to isolate a cohort, and I guess maybe this is something that I'm sort of wanting to see in our progress reports. Like, let's look at, you know, a cohort of students over time, um, rather than compare, maybe there's more validity to comparing third graders now versus a year ago and a couple of years ago, but I'm really interested, I don't know, in the journey of a child. Um, and so if you were to look at this year's eighth graders, are they doing better now that they're in eighth grade than, than they were as third graders? So I don't know if you have a succinct answer to that.
I have an answer. Um, it, it's a really interesting question, and it's a very valid question because we know mobility, for one thing, has an extreme impact on student achievement regardless, right? So as kids, both mobility within the district, as kids change schools, but in particular, if kids are moving districts, it, the research is really clear. It has a very significant impact on student achievement over time. And so just before I jump into your question, then you might ask yourself, which, which of our students have higher mobility? Well, when, then we get back into some of those, uh, distinct subgroups, then people, for example, in EDS. And so there's these layering of complicated factors that sort of stack up, you know, um, in terms of student performance. So we were able to look into that a bit, um, member Lessons, and, uh, one thing that we noticed is we, we, I'm going to call it a cohort, and I'm going to call it a pseudo-cohort, and I'm going to define those before I start. What I mean by pseudo-cohort is we can look at all of our eighth graders, and then we can look at all of our seventh graders, and then we can look at all of our sixth graders and go backwards. I call that a pseudo-cohort because it doesn't take into account all of the mobility of kids coming and going. So we looked at that cohort over time, and we saw sort of, uh, similar to what we're seeing right now, sort of in terms of our achievement levels. But then we looked at a cohort, and I can't remember the exact number, but about, but about 60% of those kids as eighth graders were actually in the Anchorage School District since third grade. And on average, when we compared it to the whole overall population, students that stayed with ASD, third through eighth, were 3% to 7% higher across the board every single year. Now, keep in mind that, that pseudo-cohort also included those kids. So if we looked at kids that were with ASD versus kids that were in and out, that, that gap would even grow. So what we see undeniably is with, when students stay with ASD, year after year, they are outperforming students that come and go.
Wow.
Thanks. I appreciate that because this was something that popped up, and I'll just share for board members in my long question. Back in the 90s, there's, they had these profiles of performance, and maybe it went up actually into the 2000s, but, um, it was a comment made that, it was a comment that some prior administrator had made, that the longer students were in ASD, the better they did. Um, and it really struck me as an important, um, an important evaluation of what ASD was doing well because, and it's just, the concept of growth has been on my radar. I think it's something we need to celebrate and, um, figure out how to do more of. Um, but I don't know how you keep kids in ASD because they are part of their families, and families are complicated.
But we know if they had a choice, they would stay with us. No. So, and one, one of the questions, um, this is one of the goals that we, we changed. It was a third grade. I mean, we, we recently did some, made some changes to this particular goal. Um, and I think it's, I think it's going to be for the, that, better. Um, I'm just curious as to, uh, any thoughts on what the change, you know, how we change this goal? What would be, what, what can we expect, I guess, as a, um, in the future? I mean, is it a good thing? Not so good thing? You're not sure?
I mean, I can make a general comment on that. I, I, I don't know if it's a good or, or a not good thing. But what I will say is, uh, one of the changes was that you went back to eighth grade, I, I believe, is one of the main changes. And, you know, I think when we're looking at our, uh, academies of Anchorage and our CCL work, it, it does, there, there's some sense there in terms of the priorities and where we're focusing our time and energy. That's really more of a qualitative perspective. Um, I can't really speak, you know.
I know, I know, but I think, I think what I was trying to do is just let, have a little bit of a conversation to let the community know that we did change. This is one of the goals we changed.
And I, oh, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, Eric Misty, Elementary Education Senior Director. And I'd say it's a good goal. I mean, you put it out there for eighth grade. What it does for our, our teams, our district-level teams and our school teams is also be able to look at longitudinally looking ahead from eighth grade backwards, backwards design, looking at where do we need to be along the way, right? So it allows us to put a pathway of where we need to get to from the elementary side, and I think that's a good thing. It helps us align better, helps us focus resources better, and it makes it very clear where we want to be.
Great. Other questions? Uh, let's, let's go to member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just I had a quick follow-up question on, um, member Lessons line of questioning, which I want to, more of a question of understanding. I, um, I, I'm starting to share, but maybe not, I don't, I want to make sure it's with a, a dose of, of caution. Uh, member Lessons in the weeds on, um, cut scores and national reports, and now I know what a pseudo-cohort is. So definitely learning as I go. Um, during the Senate education hearing yesterday, I think it was Senator Keel brought up this really great chart, um, through, with the commissioner, and they talked about it, that said our kindergartner students, um, start well below the national average, and then the, the growth really accelerates, which is fascinating. It speaks to the amazing work our educators and paraprofessionals are doing. So when we're talking about the 3% to 7% in the pseudo-cohorts, is that 3% to 7% growth per year compared to themselves the previous year? Or is that compared to the national average? How can I better explain that to myself in five minutes? Thank you.
Sure. Great, great question. Thank you so much. So when we look at the overall student, uh, overall, um, achievement of our third graders and then fourth graders and then fifth graders, that overall population of kids at those grade levels, that pseudo-cohort over time, kids come and go, there's new fourth graders, but if we just look at those grade levels, and then, and which includes, keep in mind, it includes the kids that stay with us the whole time. On any one of those given years, when we compare that performance of that whole group compared to the kids that stay with ASD each year, that if you imagine the line graph, three to seven points higher would be just the group that stays with us. Now, if we took out those kids and we compared it to mobility, I can't say what it would be, but the improvement would be even bigger.
Good question. Thank you. Other, uh, questions from the board? I'll go back to member Lessons.
Yeah, I think this, hopefully, hopefully a simpler goal will help with the resource alignment and backwards planning. Um, I think it's going to be really important when it comes to, um, the students. I was looking at the students in sixth and seventh, sixth, eighth grade, um, the sort of the, the delta between the percent of white students at and above benchmark and the percent of Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, Alaska Native, American Indian students. Like, there is a huge gap. So what is the plan to close the gap, to align our resources with the students who have the most ground to gain?
And if I could add to that, what, what would the sixth grade transition do for that? Moving, moving our, our sixth graders to middle school, sorry. But take care of the part first.
There we go. Amanda Barr, I'm the Math Curriculum Coordinator. So most of the answers to those questions, I would direct to the strategic action steps, the, this, the processes that we're following. Um, we've got those broken down for grades three, five, and grades three, six, eight. Um, you will see a lot of commonalities, for instance, using, um, that PLC model to be looking at our data and really diving into where those discrepancies are and having just more eyes on the data and tracking that data more frequently is definitely one of, um, the strategies that we're employing to, um, make an impact on our achievement gaps. Um, specifically at elementary, we're also looking at doing some alignment between our tier-three and tier-three supports, um, and really trying to look at any alignment with our tier-one, um, core curriculum and implementation. Um, again, trying to close that gap, looking at, um, the, the number of students in our subgroups that are being served with those supports and making sure that we can specifically target that alignment. Um, and then specific to, uh, grade six, eight, that is also aligned very closely with the work at elementary, is the inclusive practices work. Again, with that same goal in mind, that we're using data to look at student impact, um, of instruction, um, with the teachers that are, um, actually implementing the strategies.
And so my, was that, did you need a follow-up? Go on.
Maybe this is a comment or a share, and it's maybe not appropriate because it's coming from a visit from a high school. And the principal was super excited to share with me that the students in algebra or geometry class who also then were taking, must've been geometry, geometry and construction, that cohort of students had the greatest growth in MAPS scores at that particular school. school. And, and she was just super excited to share that information. I think that's relevant, because it's clear to me, just from that exchange, that the students are having a chance to apply their studies, their concepts. So I guess, will our middle school students have a chance to apply? And actually, you know, there was a great article on, on like, kids in the math suit learning algebra by a t-shirt business. What sort of opportunities are our students going to have moving forward, maybe that we haven't invented yet, to apply concepts, to be able to make it real?
So Amped on Algebra and Geometry and Construction are two of our collaborations between CTE and math, that are definitely having tremendous impacts on student growth in our math data. We definitely want to explore ways to expand those programs, but we'll also be implementing next year our adopted Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II curriculum, which is much more problem-based, it's very aligned to our K8 curriculum. And we actually have just started, through our department chairs at middle and high school, digging into that alignment and looking at, you know, how the standards build upon one another to make sure students have that access and the ability to problem-solve and think critically, and tackle real-life problems, not just word problems, but real-life problems.
Okay. Member Higgins?
I'm looking ahead for when we make the transition to sixth graders with all the students, and the assessments that will be made then to determine the academic impact on that. And it may go up, may go down. The studies show that we looked before showed that lower, some kids are going to be in a more difficult situation, other kids are going to benefit off of it. So that type of analysis, if we, are we going to be able to differentiate, look at that instruct, look at that impact based upon categories of students? Or we're going to be able to, if we come out with a negative academic growth compared to this year for sixth graders, and within elementary, and then we look at the middle school, and we don't see the growth, same growth that we saw in middle and elementary, what type of analysis, what types of issues, and what should we be thinking now to address that, to keep that from happening? What are we going to do to, to make sure it's a good transition for all the kids? Tough question, I know.
Well, I'll start on the data side, and then I can pass it off. But we're going to continue, especially with the Board adopting your new goals. We're going to be able to continue to share this type of data with you. And as you know, in the supplemental data, you'll see some more specific data related to schools, and you'll be able to see the types of impacts based on those various demographics. So that type of data will be available for you to analyze and review. And so we can definitely keep an eye on that, for sure. For the second part, I can pass off.
Yeah, so we've got the, our MTSs structures also, of how to support students based on data identified and student-specific student needs, is already in place at middle schools, but is also specifically designed to help mitigate that as much as possible, and will, as I mentioned, that PLC model as a way to track that student data on an individual school level. We don't currently, I believe, have systems for collecting that at a district level, per se, but you would see the impact in our district-level data.
And I think we probably will also see, I mean, kids will have longer times, longer instruction, more instruction in math. I mean, the sixth grade going to middle, they'll have math every day for 45 minutes to an hour every day, unless it's a block schedule, it will be longer. So I, I'm hoping and anticipating that that's going to be a benefit for our kids, for the sixth graders.
And if I could just follow up, I did want to comment, you know, I did, I did dig into our sixth graders that went to the secondary, because we do see a discrepancy there on the overall report, and it's a reasonable question. But when I tracked those students from their elementary to their middle school, and I compared it to those subgroup populations, they're performing in a very similar way, similar way. And we have an over-representation right now, because not all of sixth graders are at middle school. And we have an over-representation of some of our subgroups that have had traditional disparities, and that's playing out in the data. But when I looked at it more specifically, we're not seeing those gaps.
That's great. Member Lessons?
I think that's really helpful, and would be, I don't know if there needs to be additional communications with the community on that, as we continue to share information about the middle school transition, but it's definitely a question that I feel like we've gotten, you know, community pushback, right? The data show that sixth graders in middle school right now are not doing as well as sixth graders in elementary school, but they are, they have different experiences based on the feeder schools and the trends that shape people at those feeder schools. I was looking at the 2023 ACFIR. I didn't email this question, so here we go. The ACFIR is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and there's a table that shows 10 years of pupil-teacher ratios. So you can go back in time and watch the pupil-teacher ratios tick up over time. So it occurred to me that eighth graders, right now, have a PTR of like 31.25. But eighth graders in that FY19, so the 2018, 2019 school year, had a PTR of 27. And I'm just wondering if there's any reflections that you guys, and that has happened, right? The PTR increases have happened, as budget constraints have left ASD with fewer and fewer options, right? We've tried to hold younger students harmless, at the expense of older students having larger class sizes. And I know part of that was like, the middle school model preservation. In any event, so we have larger class sizes, I think, in middle school now than we did five years ago. And, and anybody reflect on how that might be affecting, we were talking about growth, slower rates of growth post-COVID? But I feel like there's slower rates of growth that are possible, given our budgetary parameters. Would we see greater rates of growth with smaller class sizes? Maybe that's the short question.
Thank you. That's a, that's a great question. Yeah, I mean, and this, this question transcends the discussion we're having here about math, right? And this really does impact all classrooms at the middle school level, or even elementary level, where we've seen PTR increase as well. And yeah, as you, obviously, as you increase people-to-teacher ratio, the amount of time that instructors can give to individual students decreases. Pair that with what we saw as the challenges students had when they came back from online instruction during COVID, you know, trying to fill some of those gaps that were created by the online instruction has, you know, transferred to the classroom, where, where time has been traditionally used to teach content, you're teaching formation skills, right? How to be a student, how to, how to engage in classrooms and, and work on those peer-to-peer relationships. So, yeah, no, there's been a real and serious impact there, and our, our hope is that, you know, as, as funding comes through, that we're able to mitigate that a little bit and provide some more of those structures in class. You know, at the middle school level, with classes where we utilize our inclusive practices and try to keep our class sizes lower, or increase the amount of educational professionals supporting students, we've seen, you know, scores really improve in those places. But again, we're, we're providing more resources to support those students, and thus we're decreasing PTR in those classes to do that great work, right?
I guess, you know, there, I feel like there's such a conversation about, you know, what do we get for the investment we make? If we have great examples of the kinds of returns we get on the investments we're making, that would be really helpful, you know, in coming, coming days, coming hours, coming weeks. Things are moving pretty fast down in June, though. But it's great to hear that investments are paying off, I think is what I, what I heard.
They are. We're seeing those, that real data, and that's something that we can definitely provide. We took a look at student growth in those classes where they did have that additional support, and that's, we can, we can show some comparative data between students who are in a 31 and a quarter classroom versus students who, who benefit from inclusive practices and some co-teach models that we have in place.
So I wanted to check back with Member Wilson online. Did you have a question or a comment?
It was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the Board on the monitoring report? Okay, seeing none. We thank you guys for your time and expertise. Thank you. And that brings us to item D on, on our agenda, which is our public comment period. I just want to go over just a couple of reminders regarding the decorum in the boardroom. But this is our, I'd like to welcome everybody to our first of two opportunities for the evening, for Board comment. The Board has set aside an hour slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Public comments in excess of an hour will be heard at the second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Today, looks like we only have people signed up for the first hour. During public comment, Board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak, and the Board's time to listen. The School Board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings due to their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. We use Robert's Rules of Order, a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the 1800s. These rules require the Board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinion and statements. When you enter the boardroom, there is a blue sheet at the door. I'm hoping that you picked that up, so that you can review the expectations for engagement in our boardroom. Please note that all public comments are limited to three minutes. The timer is in front of the dais, and you'll receive a 30-second warning when you have 30 seconds remaining. Speaking time may not be given or shared with others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not, again, not a time for dialogue. If you have handouts that you wish the Board to have, please give them to one of the ladies to my left, and they will make sure that the Board, each Board member will receive your handout. So with that, we're going to call our first speaker. Hey, we don't have any student testimony this evening, so we're moving to our community speakers. Sandy Thompson Wallace. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Anchorage School Board, Dr. Bryant and the ASD team. My name is Sandy Thompson Wallace, and I am president of Totem Association, the largest support staff bargaining unit in the Anchorage School District. First, let me say thank you to the School Board members who joined hundreds of other voices at the Red for Ed rally on Saturday, the 13th. Education funding is not only important to this district, but to our employees, families, communities, and most importantly, our students. Because isn't that who we all work for, and who this district ultimately serves? Our students, the future of our state. I would encourage everyone, regardless of political affiliation, to take a few minutes and send written testimony to your House Representative, in support of fully funding education and inflation-proofing the BSA. Make your voice heard, that our students should be the priority, and the districts across the state should be receiving the adequate funding needed to support the students within our public school system. It will take all of us, delivering the same message to make an impact. Secondly, as you are aware, Totem is currently negotiating a successor contract with the district. I was looking back at my numerous testimonies from the last negotiation process, and what was not surprising is that almost three years later, every statement made then holds true today, only the situation has gotten worse. In October 2021, Totem had 117 open positions. In September 2022, 132. Am I not talking into this correctly? And as of last Thursday, 187. You cannot recruit employees paying starting salaries at less than folks can make at the myriad of fast-food restaurants and retail chains. And even as recently as December, the Head Start Program posted job openings for full-time teacher assistants ranging from $17.90 an hour to $29.46 an hour. Compare that to our range 10 paras, who start at $16.13 and go up to $23.87. We have all been impacted by inflation. However, the impact on an employee making $15 or $16 an hour is significantly higher than those in positions within the district making over $75,000. I ask you this question in 2021, and it still applies. If not now, when? When are you going to recognize that Totem employees are a valuable part of the district, deserve to be treated with respect, and recognized for the contributions made every day? If not now, when? I say the time is now, to do right by your Totem employees. It's long overdue.
Thank you very much. Next in person here, we have Amy Tamagney. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm an administrative assistant under the Totem umbrella. I also serve as a Totem Board Member, a mentor for admin assistance here in this building, and an employee representative for Totem, for all Totem employees, not just members. Today, I am here wearing the employee representative hat. We are a district in crisis. Not only are there not, is there not enough pay for us, our paras are facing physical assaults daily. The lack of respect is taking its toll on all folks. The intensity of the meetings, phone calls for help, and peers needing support through adverse situations has increased for me greatly. As one of the very few Totem representatives, I am called on often, and step away from my regular job to assist or attend meetings. I do so with pleasure. I take it very seriously. I am encountering more and more unkindness, impatience, and inability to have or show empathy or understanding. Excuse me. Some examples: You're replaceable. You're expendable. I have more important things to deal with. Deal with it? Well, then quit. What do you want me to do about it? Sometimes you just have to play the game. These are just a few phrases that our employees are hearing directly, our Totem employees, and they have shared with me. These are employees who are being belittled, subjected to humiliation, degradation, and feeling worthless. Our employees are being made to feel less than. This is not solely a Totem issue, it is happening at all levels and all bargaining units. It's peer-to-peer, supervisor-to-employee, and occasionally employee-to-supervisor. What example are we setting for our students when this bad behavior by adults is occurring unchecked? While these one-off comments may not fall under the umbrella or established pattern of bullying, they are very telling of the issues. Unfortunately, it takes a minimum of six months, recurring behavior incidents, and plenty of data keeping to even prove bullying. What comments out there are being made that never make it to the light of day? People are afraid to speak up and come forward. They're even more afraid of retaliation if they do. Until there's legislation passed around bullying, we need to start having courageous conversations at every level of ASD. We need to be a good example for our students, community, and other employees. I am but one person making, wishing to make a positive difference. Imagine the change we can make if all people step forward to speak up and take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next, we have Susan Ritter in person. Welcome, Susan, you have three minutes.
Good evening, hi, everyone. Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Bryant and ASD administration. My name is Susan Ritter, I am a life skills teacher at West High School. I have worked for ASD in the life skills position for 17 years, both in elementary and high school settings. I am here this evening to share with you the concerns and frustrations I have with our current school year. First, I would like to thank those of you who attended the Red for Ed rally, which took place two weeks ago. There was a feeling of solidarity among the teachers, families, school board members, and the community. However, that feeling was short-lived. On Saturday, I attended the most of the seven-hour hearing on Senate Bill 140, which was held by the House Rules Committee. The testimony was compelling and heartfelt, and I, along with 12 other ASD teachers, testified. Unfortunately, the ASD leadership was not in attendance, and that left a sour taste in my mouth. I know you all were attending another event, but I do not recall anyone from ASD leadership speaking to the committee. I also know that you sent a letter to Representative Johnson, the chairman of the House Rules Committee, expressing your deep concerns about SB 140. This is not the same as speaking in person, and I wanted to let you know that I am not alone in feeling abandoned by ASD for not providing public testimony. We, the educators of this district, are in a state, I'm sorry, we, the educators of this district and the state, are in a fight for survival. We need to show a united front and stand together against the current political attacks on our educational system. I'm also once again frustrated by some of the actions administrators are taking against teachers. And why am I speaking out? Because contrary to popular belief, there is a sense of administrative retaliation in the smaller buildings for those who speak out, and here's an example. It is not okay for an administrator to contact the teacher over the weekend requesting a letter from a doctor to explain why you've been out sick on a Thursday and a Friday. It is not okay for our paraprofessionals to be offered a 000 contract, and then, when it seems absurd, to be offered a $1 raise the first year, and then a .5, .5 the second and third year. The support staff are important to our programs, and this is what you offer. It's shameful. When Amazon wakes up or, you know, comes into town, they will be starting wages at $20 an hour. Where will you find your professional, paraprofessional jobs to fill those positions? As mentioned, I'm a high school life skills teacher. My program, we are swimming in students, I co-teach, a wonderful teacher. We have each 10 students in our caseload. We do not have enough paraprofessionals to separate our classes, and to do so would be unsafe. And yet, there's a rumor out there that West is fully staffed, and we are not. And lastly, I'd like to share that our resource teachers in high school are being overwhelmed with work, and they need your help. Thank you so much for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Next, Jenna Gully. Welcome, Jenna, you have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jenna Gully, and I am a paraprofessional educator for the Special Education Life Skills Program at Kincaid Elementary School. It was hard for me to get to this point in addressing the issues that all of us paras face in this school district. In my five years of employment, I have seen more employees leave than hired. The pay is not enough for us to provide for our families. For example, in December 2023, I received an eviction notice. I was on the verge of eviction. I am a mom of two elementary-age children with one income. We are not paid a livable wage. I can't afford to pay rent, bills, food, or any other needs. If we hope to keep paraprofessionals in our district, we need to provide them with sustainable wages and benefits. Some of us employees have had to get two or three more jobs, which takes time away from our families. I know that our district has a major budget deficit, but if we want to keep the paraprofessionals who work in our schools, who serve our students and work alongside our teachers to meet the district's goals, we need to make working here livable. I urge our school board and community members to reach out to our legislators and let them know how important it is to raise the BSA so that Anchorage School District can support the employees that provide the education our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Next, we have Sarah Whitterson. Welcome, Sarah. You have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Whitterson, and I'm high school secretary, Totem member, and I'm here to continue to advocate for more help for hiring and retaining paraprofessionals and office support employees. If the Anchorage School District were a pool, paraprofessionals and office support staff are all stuck at the bottom of the pool drowning, and you are the lifeguards. The Anchorage School District needs to invest in its employees. I know with the major budget deficit, the inflation and stagnant funding from the state, we are facing an uphill battle. I know that I am preaching to the choir by stating that we need a major increase in the BSA, not the measly $300 that is currently proposed at the state. Educators of all titles wear many hats, and district must invest in their employees to compensate those of us on the front lines of education so that we can support the state's most precious asset, our children. Support staff and paraprofessionals are educators. Most people assume that an educator is someone who has a teaching certificate. This is not the case. Schools would not function if office support and paraprofessionals were not employed. Our district has over 180 open positions in these critical roles, which has increased since I last spoke two weeks ago. Those of us who are still working don't know where our regular job responsibilities begin or where they end because we are covering for so many of these open positions. We are sometimes even subbing for teachers because they are out while covering other paraprofessionals because they are out or not employed. And our own high-stress, physical, mentally, and emotionally trying jobs all at the same time. And we cannot support ourselves on the pay we receive for all the work that we are doing, all at the beginning base rate of pennies over $15 an hour. I have students working in entry-level positions in fast-food or retail that make more than I do after nine years in the district. This is unacceptable. The work that paraprofessionals and office support staff performs has a far more critical impact in the future of the state and our community than those jobs do. We profoundly impact student lives far more than most people understand, and we are always overlooked and most certainly underappreciated. Please find the money in the budget to invest in all educators. What we are doing is currently not sustainable.
And thank you very much. That concludes our persons wanting to be heard or speakers. And now that moves us to item E on our agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as written. Sir?
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Is there any opposition to approve? Oh, we have to do a board vote because Dora is not in the room.
Member Higgins?
Who was it?
Member Higgins?
Okay.
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Holman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Member Wilson, can you hear? You're muted. She said yes, she typed yes, at least.
President Bellamy?
Yes. And that motion passes seven yays, no yays unanimously, actually. Thank you. And that brings us now to item G. F, we have no items under F. That brings us to G, non-action items. These items will come back before you at our next meeting. This is the first reading. Moving on to item H. We have no other public comment. So we're now with the superintendent, item I. Superintendent, update.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments. One, I really appreciated the time and dialogue of the school board this past weekend as we discussed our goals and guardrails. Now that we're close to having the final product, I hope that that can serve as the North Star for my team so we can realize the bold and ambitious vision that the community has set for us. It's very positive. And on my end, aside from the board goals, really, the focus has been to support the board to navigate these conversations with the community and with our legislators on school funding because, as has been alluded to today, there's a lot on the line. And a base student allocation increase is a huge step in the right direction. And I really want to make sure that the community understands that right now, the number being talked about in June is $300. $300 for ASD would be a $75-plus million deficit going into next year. So it's a good starting point, but we have a lot of work to go as this legislative session continues. So going into February, just so the community is aware, we'll present the board with a balanced budget recommendation that reflects the guardrails that was set by the board in the budget guidance document. And for the community's awareness, many of the folks in the room know this, but for anybody tuning in, ASD needs to present a balanced budget based on our confirmed revenues. So what that means is that the budget proposal will reflect nearly $100 million in reductions. And that includes a spend-down of our fund balance to as low as 5%, which is unprecedented in recent times. So in other words, it will not reflect any hopes for increases in state revenues because this legislative process is ongoing, and we are in dire need of our community's support to let your legislators know how you feel about education funding and let them know what's on the line from your vantage point. From mine, the stakes are extremely high. For those who are curious to know, how do I get in contact with legislators? How do I make my voice heard? I would encourage you to visit asdk12.org/fy25. FY stands for fiscal year. And there's a button that directs you to how to contact our legislators. We could use your voices in the conversation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Member Lessons?
I don't have, well, I don't think I have, maybe I have a question. I wanted to share with the board, there are more of us here than over the weekend at our goal establishment meeting, that I spent a little bit of time in the board's archives, and it occurred to me that this scale of this deficit exceeds the scale of the reductions ASD had to implement when oil crashed and the housing market crashed in 1986, '87, and the district was immediately asked to cut about 10% of its budget. The scale of $98 million with our general fund is a larger percent than when oil crashed, and that just strikes me as devastating, but remarkable at the same time. So I appreciate, Dr. Bryant, you sharing that the $300 BSA increase is inadequate. I wonder if you could just spend a moment articulating the degree of adequacy. What would a 14, what would a BSA increase of $1,413 as this board has resolved to support? Like, what would that mean for ASD's ability to maintain a reasonable fund balance in case we have an earthquake in a year from now? Or in case there's some other reason that we need to have a fund balance?
More than $6 million.
More than $6 million. Because that's, because if we spend the fund balance down to 5%, we are only having, we will only have $6 million on hand.
Expendable.
Expendable, to deal with an emergent situation.
Yes, that's a great question, Member Lessons, and through the president. To reiterate what Member Lessons shared, if we spend down fund balance to 5%, that means that ASD only has around 6% of accessible fund balance to use. And $6 million to an everyday person might sound like a lot, but best practice is for an organization like ASD is to have at least 10%. And that guidance comes from the National Organization of School Business Officials. And why is that? Because we are at risk of, you know, one, an earthquake that could cause a need for an infusion of cash to invest in infrastructure. We were in that situation back in 2018. We fund all of our healthcare claims as a district for most of our employees. So if there were some sort of mass healthcare, we need funds for that. There's cash flow and other boring accounting things that are really important as well. But all of that to say, it's very important that ASD be able to weather at least a couple of months of operations. And we are getting very close to not being able to do that, and that's a scary thing. And that's the situation that we're in when it comes to spending down fund balance to 5%. And as I mentioned previously, with a $300 BSA increase, that would result in a deficit of about $76 million. And as you even go up to $680, we'd be looking at a $49 million deficit. As we get closer to what ASD and ASB and other organizations are advocating for, that's an increase of $1,413 would be the BSA increase that we're asking for because that would essentially allow the district to be whole from what's been over seven years of flat funding. So we would be able to spend down to a more reasonable amount of fund balance, which would be 8% in that scenario. And that would give the district that 10% of fund balance that we would need. That's a healthy amount, that's the best practice guidance amount. And then, we could even look towards figuring out ways that we can go beyond just keeping the lights on and moving towards innovating and investing strategically in wages and high-impact programs for students. And then, of course, we still need to combat inflationary pressures that exist beyond FY '25, but we'll be so much closer to that with a meaningful BSA increase of $1,413 than we would be with something as low as 300. And I'll leave it to Member Lessons if I left out figures, but that's the gist of it, is that a lot is on the line. And while, you know, $5 million may seem like a lot, if there were some sort of emergency, ASD, which is one of the largest employers in the state, would be in a very precarious position for the thousands of employees that we have.
Follow-up? No. Okay. Any other questions or comments to the superintendent's update? Right, seeing none, we're moving on to item J2. If we have any, I don't know that we have conference reports, but we do have a couple of written, at least one, community, Federation of Community Council report that's attached to the agenda, as well as community outreach, if there are any, they'll be attached to the agenda. So now, board member comments. We'll go with, who wants to go first tonight? Miss Member Higgins, let's have you go first.
Well, let me just say, I appreciate the emotional presentation and testimony tonight, and it means a lot to me, and it touches me, and I want to show you that. You know, we have a system that we've got issues with. We don't have the resources, but we've got the obligations, and we've got to find a way to do it. And I don't know how that's going to happen, but to the degree that I can play a role in that, I will. It just touches me quite a bit. So I appreciate the testimony. Other than that, I know that we're coming up with the budget issues. We're coming up with the issue of the legislature, and I can tell you, the best time we ever had working with the legislature and great, great Lassie schools got really active, and the public really made lots of phone calls to their representatives. There was a lot of contact there. There was a lot of contact there, and the representatives felt overwhelmed with it, and they actually reacted with the BSA. We need the public to be very engaged. They're your, the legislators are your employees. We are your employees. And you need to make clear to them your expectations and hold them accountable. That's where it's going to happen because too many kids, their future is at stake. The educational outcome is the next generation, and we just simply have to do better. So I sincerely hope that everybody listening to this and contacting others, make sure your voice is heard. I know it frustrates legislators, so therefore it must be effective. But we need, we need your voice. They'll listen to you and just insist upon what you want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'll second everything Member Higgins just said, but add tomorrow's a critical juncture for the passage of a meaningful BSA increase this session as the House will be taking up the Christmas tree bill that is now SB 140. This is a great 24-hour period to let your elected officials know where you stand on supporting public education. A really easy way to identify who represents you in the legislature is by going to akleg.gov. At the very bottom of that webpage is a "Who Represents Me?" field where you can input your address, and your representatives and their contact information will instantly come up. So I would encourage everyone to do as I have done. And I know each member of the school board, reach out to elected officials, whether you are a constituent or not, and express your concerns and encourage action on legislation which supports our paraprofessionals or educators, our administration, and most importantly, our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I remain concerned regarding the board's decision not to record in the minutes motions that fail without a second. I'm hoping the members will reconsider this decision and have the minutes of our meetings include the moving of all substantive motions. There are only seven of us on this board, and just because only one member believed a matter so significant as to warrant a motion is just not a good reason not to record that in the minutes. I think the public needs an official record, a written record, of at least the substantive motions that occur at this meeting. The existence of a YouTube video is not the same as an official written record of the board's proceedings. It's just not. And I think all minutes should at least record all substantive motions. And I ask that this board reconsider this change. And I'll join any of the other members that want to propose a policy that reinstates the practice of recording all motions that are made in these meetings.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Wilson, do you have any comments?
Just a few. I appreciate the other board members' comments about advocating for education for our kids with legislators in Juneau. Just a reminder that there's a lot of discussion about workforce development, and oftentimes it is, and local hire, and oftentimes it is focused at adults. And the ultimate workforce development in Alaska is investing in our students so that we can prepare them for future careers, future jobs, ideally here in Alaska or elsewhere. But just to really, truly make that connection between developing our future workforce and the future of our community is investing in our students and making sure they're academically prepared for whatever it is they choose to do as a career. I also want to share that I'm really excited that our students are going to be attending a visit in Juneau as well and talking to legislators. I've had the pleasure of doing that, traveling with them for a few years. I will not be traveling this year, but it's been amazing having the opportunity for our students to understand what that legislative process is and how they can partake in it and really empower them to continue to do that. So I'm excited that our students get to attend again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on around. Member Lessons?
Thanks. So first of all, I want to say it's Battle the Books season. So if you haven't had a chance to witness a good old-fashioned Battle the Books session, I think that the district one is coming up. I know there are school battles that have happened. It's really fun and exciting to cheer these kiddos on. So thanks for all of the participants and especially the staff who have been putting these training sessions and actual days of competition together. It's also spelling bee season. I'm looking forward to visiting, I think with Dr. Bryant, the Betty Davis High School robotics team sometime really soon. So that's coming up. I wanted to flag, as I referenced earlier, I was rummaging through old documents, and Member Holloman, I found when ASD eliminated swimming as a PE class, that was in FY '05. There were a lot of other instances of, you know, there are lots of instances of reductions to align available funds with instruction. That is absolutely a common theme as you go back year after year after year. I was pleased to read that back in FY '07 that there was a historic $460 increase to the BSA that year. And as a result, ASD was able to add the dome lease to the budget that year as a one-time expenditure after reinstating academic cuts to kindergarten TAs, to counselors, and to teacher planning time. So I just, I felt like that was a little bit of historical context. That number one, we've had historic base student allocation increases in the past. And number two, I know that we spoke about the dome. I've shared my own concerns that we need to allocate our resources towards instruction. So I guess I found proof in the pudding that at that point in time, that was listed as a one-time expenditure that I think has become inscribed into practice. So I have concerns about that. I have concerns about some of the other things that were part of the board guidance document, but I am eager to see the budget. Appreciate the staff time that's going into it. And I will pause there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Member Holloman?
Yes, I'm going to say, I think we still had some swim classes as elective in high school in 2012, 2013. Was when the last ones finally went away. And I see that as one of those things that a lot of people in the community really like for us to do. It's not the reason kids go to school, but there's a huge benefit when most people in the community know how to swim. They wind up not living in a state that leads the nation in drowning deaths like we did and other things. I hope sometime that we can figure out a way with the city that we can bring swimming back as an elective for a number of reasons. And we'll echo what several of the board members, Member Higgins, said. I do hope parents will speak up. Parents that are comfortable with it, I hope will talk to their representatives to tell them what matters to them about their neighborhood schools because some of the proposals that we heard from the amendments to SB 140 would have a pretty dramatic impact on neighborhood schools down the road. And they've already been impacted pretty severely already. My experience is, while there are certainly people that have issues with things that are happening in the schools every day, the vast majority of parents, when you ask them if they will like the school and the education their child is getting, generally say yes. And in fact, even legislators are telling us how bad the school does, the performance from school is. If you stop them and ask them which school it is, they generally identify all the individual schools as doing a great job, but somehow the school district itself is failing our kids. I do hope parents will speak up to their neighbors and to their friends. Most people in the community don't have a kid in school. They don't have firsthand experience with a child coming home with assignments. They don't see the day-to-day work that goes into it. I hope they won't simply let those comments pass. There absolutely is an attack on public education. And it's not that everyone that wants to change public education has the same motivation, but there are people that are attacking it, and they're getting a lot of support and help by tapping into some of the frustration and anger that people feel on specific issues. So I would urge people to say how they feel. And I'm sure there will be some negative comments in there, but I also am pretty confident that the majority of them will be positive as well. I also want to say that having come from the situation of being a bargaining unit member and being bargained on behalf of, and then actually participating at some level in bargaining and then sitting on the board, it unfortunately brings out the worst. That somehow even when everybody starts from a place of knowing the importance of the job that people are doing, the need they have for resources to do a better job and whatnot, somehow that gets lost in the bargaining process. Inevitably, even when you start out purposely trying to have interest-based bargaining and the idea of maintaining good relationships, that gets you a certain distance down the road before it goes sour. Or you do the traditional route where it just kind of goes sour pretty much at the beginning. But I would say to the folks from TOTM, I think the overwhelming majority of people in Anchorage, and certainly people in the district, understand how crucial the job you do is. It kind of goes into that overhead category that people always feel like we could cut that part of the budget and put it quote "in the classroom", not realizing a lot of that money is already in the classroom. And the TOTM members spend a lot of time working one-on-one with students every single day. Our students have such a wide range of interests and competibilities and motivations. And it's not always teachers they connect with. In a good school, every adult working in that school is part of working with some group of kids. And so I, I hope one day we find a bargaining method that somehow allows us to maintain a high level of respect and let it be felt even as we argue about things like how much we can afford to pay or should pay, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It unfortunately always trends into a direction that does not express our feelings. And I think that's unfortunate. I don't have a good solution for it either, but I think we do have to step back sometimes and just remind ourselves we're arguing over picky details that are emotional and personal. But it doesn't mean that we don't have the respect for the job that's being done out there by everybody every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I only have a couple of comments. First of all, I do want to thank the board for all of the hard work we did on Saturday to finalize our revised and finalize our goals and our guardrails. And I do thank each of you for being as responsive as you have been with legislatures, making sure that they had the data that completes ASD's story. And I want to thank the staff for doing the same thing. It is, it is, it is not easy to answer so, to do your jobs and to respond to us. Now we're adding the legislatures, and they're sometimes come through us, but most often they might come directly to you. And I just want you to know that we appreciate it and we thank you because we want the information about ASD to be accurate and to be timely. So I do thank the board, those of you who wrote letters or answered questions from legislatures. I want to thank you, and I know you'll keep doing that. I get a couple of questions from community councils that I just, most of them I've passed on to Dr. Bryant, and there will be a response in Board Connect. One of the most recent ones, though, that I hadn't sent in has to do with the district's plan for RS, what is it, RSE and COVID, since those things are rising. And the impact that it's, you know, what is our plan to help schools weather those things? So I don't, I don't know if, and I do see that we did get another, I did get another email tonight on that. So I'm not suggesting that we go back into COVID lockdown. I'm just simply asking, as people get sick and can't be in school, and we have a depleted or a very low subpool, what do we do? I know Matt Sue has closed schools because of illness. And so at some point, I'd like to know what our plan is for that. And finally, I mean, board members have already said, you know, invited people to join us in our advocacy. Your viewpoints are very, very important. Just like telling our story is important. It's not just up to board members to do that. It's up to each and every one of us. So please continue to contact your elected officials. Share what you value about ASD, what you value about public education, what you value about your family's experience. That's what they want to hear. They see us coming, and it's like, oh, well, they don't want to hear from us. They really don't. We do communicate with them. They want to hear from the people who are most impacted. So we will continue to advocate and to answer every legislator's question. They don't come one at a time. They trickle in all day. And we are fortunate to have a responsive, to have a response for them. So we do have a section on our webpage where you can go to get a list of elected officials and hopefully that you will share, you know, your stories, our story, with legislators. So please do that. We can give the facts, but you can tell the story even better than we can. So with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
Moved in second to adjourn. It is 7:30. Any opposition? We are adjourned. Thank you.